Okay. Good afternoon, I am Board President Shebra Evans and I wanted to welcome you to today's Board Virtual Business Meeting on this day, March 23rd, 2020. As we all know, Governor Larry Hogan declared a state of emergency on March the 12th and State Superintendent Dr. Karen Salmon announced that Maryland public schools will close through March 27th. Health officials have also determined that school closures are a necessary and effective way to stop the spread of COVID-19. We hope that our students, staff, and their families remain safe and healthy. In light of this and out of an abundance of caution, the Board of Education has decided to conduct its business meeting virtually today. Although the boardroom is closed to the public, the meeting is being livestreamed on the website in MCPSTV. We have also provided a telephone number for the public to join the meeting that way as well. This meeting will be solely focused on the essential time-sensitive business of the Board and live public comments have also been suspended. Although members of the public can join us by phone, the lines have been muted to avoid background noise and interruptions. Before we get started, I will call the roll and ensure that we have a quorum of the Board present on the line. And we will begin with our Vice President.
Hi, this is Brenda Wolf, Vice President.
Hi, Rebecca Smundrowski, Board of Education.
Judy Daca, Board of Education.
Hi, this is Pat O'Neal, Member of the Board.
Hello, this is Nate Tenbite, Student Member of the Board.
Hi, this is Carla Sylvester, Football Member at Large.
Hi, this is Jeanette Dixon, Member of the Board at Large. I want to just say thank you, a big thank you to our school administration for all that you've done for all of our students. Thank you very, very much.
Okay, thank you. We do have a quorum for Board Members. Dr. Smith, if you would introduce yourself and all of our senior leadership as well?
Yes, hello, Ms. Evans and Members of the Board. I'm sure we're all surprised to be meeting in this way, but I'm glad that we're able to connect and continue to do the business of the school system and keep things moving on behalf of our community. I'll ask the folks who are in the room with me to introduce themselves and then we have people also on the telephone that we'll ask to do a roll call. So, Dr. Smith.
Monica McKnight, Deputy Superintendent.
Hi, everyone. Good to hear you.
Drewun Coletti, Chief Superintendent.
Maria Navarro, Chief Elementary Officer.
Darlene Harris, Supervisor, Chief of Staff.
Dr. Zuckerman.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, Andrew Zuckerman, Chief Operating Officer, I'm on the line.
Dr. Wilson.
Janet Wilson, Interim Chief of Schools, I'm on the line.
Mrs. McGuire.
Ashley McGuire, Acting Associate Superintendent for Operations, on the line also.
Jeanie Dawson.
Hello, Jeanie Dawson, Director of Materials Management, on the line.
A member of the General Counsel's Office, but I didn't catch the name.
Karen Wetmore, I'm Assistant General Counsel. You're welcome.
Other staff members who are on the line?
Yeah, hi, this is Dan Morel, Acting CFO.
Dr. Johnson, are you there?
Yeah, Henry Johnson, Chief of Staff.
I think that's everyone, Ms. Evans.
Okay, we also have Board Staff on the line.
Dr. Smith, this is Andrew Zuckerman. I believe we have Seth Adams, Director of Facilities Management, also on the line if needed for questions.
Thank you.
Okay, so can we have our Board Staff introduce themselves as well?
This is Laura Christina Webb, Chief of Staff to the Board.
Robin Zebra, Board Staff.
Victoria Van Dyke, Board Staff.
Okay, great. So I'll continue on. So in order to maintain order, I will call upon each Board Member to ask questions and to give comments and votes as we proceed through the agenda items. If Board Members or Staff like to speak, I would ask that you introduce yourself each time so that we all know who is speaking. So in the meantime, Board Members and Staff, if you could please mute your phones to minimize the background noise for listeners, I would greatly appreciate it. And today, we will only have two major agenda topics and that will be, one, a COVID-19 update from Superintendent Jack Smith, and, two, a review and approval of consent items. At this time, if I can get a Board Member to approve the agenda, motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Hi. Judy.
The motion was made by Mrs. Smundrowski and the second was Dr. Daca? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, is it moved and seconded? If I can get a yes from all Board Members for the approval?
Yes.
Just say your name, say yes.
Yes, Rebecca.
Pat O'Neal, yes.
Carla Sylvester, yes.
Wolf. Yes, Ms. Wolf?
Oh, no, I got disconnected, I thought. Okay, sorry.
Is that a yes from Ms. Wolf?
Oh, yes, I just, I just got connected. I just got connected back.
Okay, Mr. Tenbite?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tenbite?
Yep, yes for me.
Ms. Dixon?
She may still have it on mute.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. And that's a yes from me, Mrs. Evans, and that is a unanimous vote. So at this time, I will let Dr. Smith begin.
Thank you, Ms. Evans and Members of the Board. Before we start talking about the current efforts around the operation and the continuity of learning of the school system, I just would like to mention that, as you all know, Mr. Jonathan Bost from Walter Johnson High School died from injuries from a car accident last Thursday. And I do this because we're not in our normal state and the Walter Johnson School Community is in many ways like the rest of us, cut off from the usual levels of support. So I wanted to say, on behalf of the school system, that our thoughts and prayers and our hearts are with him today. I also just want to acknowledge our employees. We have 24,000 employees who do, on a daily basis, great, great work and they're used to coming to work, they're used to pitching in and supporting student well-being, supporting student learning, and making the school operate very well. Over the past week and today, and over both last weekend and this week, many, many employees have come together, especially around the operations of the school system. First, the food distribution with the first of many cleaning and sanitizing of schools with billion administrators going into schools to pick up things for families, inhalers and all sorts of things that families have needed across the community, with our Transportation Department, our Maintenance Department, our parent educators, many of them helping in so many different ways, and many others frustrated because during an emergency closure, they're not able to do the things they want and need to do on behalf of students. But we would be remiss if we did not call out their good work and their commitment and all of the things that have been happening and the planning that people have been doing individually and on the telephone and, you know, through the digital world to make sure that we are fully ready to serve our students when this closure ends this Friday, March 27th. And so, just want to thank each and every member of the MCPS community and certainly the Board of Education Members as they have communicated with us and stayed deeply engaged in all of the work over the past 11 days essentially since the 12th of March when this announcement was made. And so at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. McKnight, who has put together an update on where we are with the work we've been doing and as we move forward. I would remind everyone that this is like running really fast in the dark. And so we just have a lot of things that we don't know and that we can't know right now, but we want to share the things we do know and the things that we're planning, aspiring, and thinking about in the coming days. So, Dr. McKnight?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Smith, and good afternoon, Board Members again. Today, I have quite a bit of information to share with you regarding updates to how we are managing the COVID-19 circumstance. Because there are going to be a number of topics that I cover, I am going to ask if you could hold all questions until the end because I'm going to go over several key areas, including calendar updates, continuity of learning plan, update on meals and the expansion, safety measure reminders that we're putting out to our students, as well as highlighting a few collaboration efforts. So there are going to be a number of areas that I cover, so if you could, I know you may have questions and we look forward to getting to them, but if you'll allow me the opportunity to go through the information so that you have all of it first, hopefully some of it will address your questions or thoughts. And again, whatever we don't address here in this briefing, we'll give an opportunity to address questions later. So I'll first start with an update on the school calendar. So we are currently in our second week of the state mandated emergency closure due to COVID-19. We got through the first week and we're now in our second week. And so I just want to take this opportunity to remind our community that March 16th through the 27th, our state mandated closure of all Maryland schools is considered an emergency closure. The reason I'm highlighting that is because outside of inclement weather closures, normally we don't have emergency closures. But when we do, and in those circumstances like inclement weather, our employees do not work. So that means from March 16th through the 27th, MCPS teachers were not expected to give students new assignments, tests, projects, or deliver new instruction. And that's why we went to the measures of making sure that we had educational resources posted on our websites so that our students would have that available to them, as well as in paper copies. With that said, I want to note that our teachers care and many of them have been connecting virtually with our students to check in, and we applaud their actions for that because I'm sure that gesture, as well as many other things, have been able to bring comfort to our students during this time. And so I just wanted to take a moment to applaud them for doing that. Students are reaching out to them and I think just to be able to ask the question, "How are you doing?", you know, "We're going to get back to our normal state and here's what we can do to support you during this period" is going to be helpful. So again, acknowledging our teachers for doing that. With that said, we are also working on a system, working on creating a system to ensure that teachers and students are reconnecting through our continuity of learning plan, which I'm going to speak more about shortly. So acknowledging that this personal touch is important, we're actually planning for that to happen in a consistent way and model through that continuity of learning plan. So with that, I'll again acknowledge that this is a very difficult time. Dr. Smith alluded to the analogy of running in the dark. You know, it is dark, but we are indeed running because what we do want to make sure is that we are making those connections through personal touches, learning, and resources so that, one, our students can remain safe and get their needs met while they're not in school, and making sure that we provide things that will give them at least framework of normal circumstances, although that's far from what we are navigating now. So right now, we are awaiting further guidance from state officials on whether this closure will be extended. While it has not yet been announced by the state, we are planning for an extended closure just in case circumstance require us to do so. We want to be prepared for whatever circumstances come about, and so we are planning for that. And so that's what I mean when I say we are running. So if we are, if we are remaining in our closure structure, a schedule that already has been sent out, or we extend, we're planning for both circumstances. Once a decision is made, or we hear from the government or the state, we are already collaborating with our association partners to revise the school calendar and present it to the Board for approval. So we're already having conversations about what we already know about emergency closure and if we get into a circumstances that changes, what we should do. So we will be prepared for whatever comes out or if information comes out, to share with you what we have been able to talk with our association partners about and have agreed upon. So that's to come. So that's all I have to share right now in regards to our calendar update. Next, I'm going to move to our long-range continuity of learning plan. While our school buildings are closed, the significant work continues on behalf of our students, which is why we're having this conversation. We have been actively preparing, in the case of an extended closure, with our partners from MCEA, McCAP, and SEIU, to make sure we have everything prepared and set to support our learning plan for our students to continue in a way that works for our teachers, our students, and all who are involved. Our preparation includes designing plans for innovative, remote student instruction, that is a continuity of learning plan that uses multiple tools, for example, online tools, TV, telephone, hard copy packets, all of that, in an effort to provide teaching and learning. When we say continuity of learning, we are talking about a plan to keep students engaged in differentiated learning experiences while they are absent from school. The plan will include standard-based learning experiences to support all students in achieving grade level or course requirement outcomes. The key components of this framework that we're working on are going to include learning opportunities, supporting, assessing, and reporting and assessing student progress on learning, academic, psychological, physical, and social emotional well-being of students, professional learning for staff, and also with a focus on the well-being of staff. We're gathering and finalizing distribution plans for digital devices that will help ensure our students can engage in this new model. These devices will be prioritized for students in need. The deployment will include providing Chromebooks and/or Internet access through filtered Wi-Fi devices. Transitioning to a new learning model is going to take time and patience from everyone and I just want to focus on that because we will be learning a new model of educating our students together, staff alongside the students, and definitely inclusive of our parents, who will have a role in this. Our students and staff will be asked to use various tools and engage in teaching and learning in new and creative ways. However, we are confident that instruction in this new model can be delivered successfully and effectively, which is why we have spent many hours really planning for that, again, in case we need to launch it and we need to be prepared for that. So we will provide updates to the community on this new continuity of learning model later this week. This will be shared utilizing our multiple platforms that our community are already familiar with, including Connect Ed, Alert MCPS, the MCPS website, social media, and more. So again, we're going to use those methods of communication that our community is used to and have been using to make sure we get the word out. We're also going to share this information with our county partners, who will also help disseminate this information to make sure it gets out to everyone who needs to have access. For this week, we encourage families to continue to take full advantage of the educational activities and materials that were posted online through My MCPS Classroom. We have provided additional external online learning experiences and resources, as well as tips and ideas to engage children on the MCPS website and on our MCPS social media accounts. So that covers continuity of our learning plan. Next, I'm going to go to an update on current meals and the expansion plan. In addition to ensuring continuity of learning, we're also ensuring students have access to meals. Our Food and Nutrition Services Staff Members and other MCPS staff have been hard at work ensuring that our children and students continue to have access to nutritious meals while schools are closed. As of this past Friday, we have served more than 87,000 meals. Again, as of this past Friday, we've served more than 87,000 meals to our students. I'm pleased to share that we have expanded our service to include weekend backpack food sets in collaboration with Manana Food Center. Starting today, we are providing meals at more than 40 sites, and that includes our mobile site. We also are looking at ways to deploy MCPS food and nutrition programs directly to students in communities with less than 50% farms rate through different delivery models that are permissible under our Maryland State Department of Education and United States Department of Agriculture Regulation. We know the urgent need all over our county and are pleased to be able to have operations in so many locations so quickly and are moving as fast as we can to stand up additional operations, given the regulatory constraints that the school districts are working through in this uncharted territory. So I just want to hone in on that because in our normal process, we already have systems set up to really serve our communities that have a high farms rate. This requires us actually really looking at expanding that plan, which we have not done in the past. Our current circumstances say that we need to do that, but we're going to have to actually work through, again, many different state and state guidelines and federal guidelines to be able to allow us to do that. So that's why for some areas, it's taken us a little bit longer to be able to expand to than some that we were able to initially start out with. So with that, I'll say that we're grateful for our many restaurants, county government agencies, nonprofit partners, PTAs, and organizations who have stepped up in providing meals, groceries, and gift cards to our families in need. It is also important that we support the physical, social, and psychological well-being of our students during this time. Providing the meals is only one part of it, but to think about the other impact that they'll have just through this circumstance, or for some, in some other circumstances that, you know, we just have to work harder to be aware of since they're not coming to school, will also have to remain a priority. So we are collecting resources for our students and families and we're posting on our website, continuing to focus on the importance of mental, social, physical well-being during this time. So that covers our meal plans and expansion plan. I will then move on to a few of the things that we put in place to support the governor and county council, county exec plea to our community around being safe and how that relates particularly to our students. So we definitely want all of our students to stay healthy and safe, which means they have to engage in social distancing. And of course, this means avoiding gatherings in groups of more than 10 and keeping a safe distance from others within a group. We're hearing from many community members who have seen students gathering on our fields and ignoring social distancing guidance. And so by doing this, we're not putting, they're not only putting themselves at risk, but also everyone else that they interact with after that. We know our students want to connect with their peers, especially in a time of crisis. Regardless of the intent, social gatherings have the potential to spread COVID-19. So we ask that all members of the community join us in following the guidance that's been provided by the CDC, federal, state, and local health officials. We've also put out a few public service announcements to remind our students of the safety measures that they should take. We've engaged other members of our community in that message to make sure we are reaching them and getting the word out. The more we can all do that collectively, the better it will be. And then finally, I just want to close on just the collaboration. It seems like it's been weeks that we've been working on this, when actually it has only been five, six working days.
Five and a half days.
And it is, it's hard to even share how impossible this would be without the collaboration efforts of many who share the same interest with us. So I just want to say to our partners, we thank the county, state, and community partners who have stepped up to support our students during this crisis. Again, we are all in this together and as people continue to want to support and build those partnerships, we welcome the support and are really moving everybody in the direction to make sure that they are helping in ways that are helping our collective community. And in closing, lastly, I want to say, I want to continue to encourage our staff and members of our community to visit the MCPS coronavirus webpage because that's where we're posting information as we get it as frequently as possible and that's where we're also sharing updated information daily. We will also continue to use all of our tools and avenues available to us to provide our community with timely updates through that venue as well. So with that, that's the overall update. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Smith and Ms. Evans, and if the Board Members have questions, we can take that as we have staff available who can help provide details if needed.
Thank you, Dr. McKnight. As you can see, there are a lot of moving pieces and we've been trying to respond to our community through regular messages and we look very closely at all of the messages we get from them and try and then respond to the whole community because if one, or 10, or even 100 people have a question, then thousands more probably do. So we've been really listening to our community and they've provided some good insights and we've tried to share back with them how we're thinking about things, or thank you for bringing up something that we've not yet had a chance to work on. We would certainly answer any questions if we know the answer for any of the Board Members.
Okay, thank you for that update, Dr. McKnight and Dr. Smith. I will call on each Board Member. I'll start off with Ms. Wolf. Did you have any questions that you would like to ask?
No, I don't have any questions, but I do want to point out what an excellent job our Food Services Staff has done. I've actually been out to the site, as I know many of you have, and it's just amazing that we were able to ramp up that quickly. So I want them to know how grateful we are for what they've been doing. Thank you, that's it.
That's what I was thinking about. I was at a site on Wednesday, one on Thursday, one on Friday, and just, it was inspiring and encouraging to see what's going on.
Ms. Dixon, did you have any questions come? Oh, sorry, Ms. Wolf. Ms. Wolf, did you want to make one last comment? Maybe she didn't. Okay, Ms. Dixon, did you have any questions, comments to ask?
Right, can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
Oh, great. Well, I don't have any questions, but I do want to just say again, thank you to Dr. Smith and Dr. McKnight for your leadership during this time. You have been magnificent in communicating with us and with the community and we're very, very fortunate. I want to also thank our community, our students, our staff, and just really urge everyone to be patient. We really are in uncharted territory and I know that the administration is doing the best that they can to be responsive, you know, to all of the questions and concerns that, you know, everyone has. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Daca, did you have any comments or questions?
I agree with all of the things that my Board Members have been saying, my colleagues have been saying about staff. I also want to say that they have done a wonderful job of catching up with some of the communities that found that some of the high schools and the middle schools were too far to get to, so they have made plans in order to accommodate those communities as well. So we're very adaptable in this system and we know that we have wonderful people who work here.
Thank you. Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes, this is Pat O'Neal. I too want to extend my thanks to all of our employees and our community members. You know, I think of this as like a blizzard without snow. One difference is, you know, unlike with real snow, you know that eventually the snowplows will get to you and you can follow the, you know, the counting list of when they're coming. We don't know when we're going to get plowed out and be able to get back life back to normal. And it truly is a difficult time for everyone in our community and I really thank our employees who- employees who have been going above and beyond the call of duty. I have had a number of community members reach out and want to help, and I know our food service program, you know, there are requirements from the federal level and the state level, but if community members wanted to contribute to grocery store gift cards or something of that such, or help with the Manna backpacks for food, how, where would we direct them to go? Because I know that many people, many families are hurting and will be continuing to hurt over the coming weeks, and some people are in the position that they can write checks. Where would they go?
So there is a county volunteer system, and so we've been working with the county, and so the best way to volunteer, if you want to do something, is volunteer through the county government, and then they're deploying people to us as appropriate for the work we have to do. And then if they want to give, we can certainly post on our website any of the organizations that like Manna and like systems for, people are looking for shelter and all of the things. So we'll post that on our website for people who are looking for those organizations that are directly supporting individuals in our community right now. We'll get that collected. I was on Friday, and it's amazing all the different work that's getting done across the county. It may have been Thursday, but with organizations that are doing good work. So we'll get that up on our website and solicit from them their contact information.
Would it be useful for us to have through the Education Foundation contributions for gift cards? Is that complicated in terms, but, you know, I saw that in a couple of school systems over in Virginia, folks have started GoFundMe accounts to buy gift cards and be distributed by principals directly to families in their community.
So we certainly could work with the foundation for donations and expand the Dine with Dignity program, because once this is all over, MCPS will be reimbursed for some of what's happening, but a lot of it is going to be left to the school system and the county government to fund. So if they want to give directly to the students who are feeding every day, the Education Foundation would be the best way to do that.
Okay, thank you. And thank you and all of your staff for everything you're doing every day.
Thank you. Ms. Silvestri?
Yes, again, just thank you so much for everyone that has been working night and day to be a children and to plan for the extended learning that's to come. I wanted to just ask again, the plan for the continuity of learning. I heard Dr. McKnight said that it will be a combination of medium, online, maybe hard copy, and telephone. Could you confirm that I heard that correctly or expand if possible?
Yes, you are correct, Ms. Silvestri. Our goal is to be able to provide multiple methods of learning, to include resources that students are familiar with, meaning people and instructional materials, and also thinking about ways that we will accommodate students and families who have multiple students in multiple grade levels, as well as those who currently may need access to technology and internet services.
Okay. And I've heard you also say about meeting standards. I'm concerned about students that are on the verge of graduating, that they will be able to earn their credits as planned and be on their way to graduate.
We've had several conversations with the state superintendent around this, because it is a Maryland state diploma. And so tomorrow, actually, the state board is going to meet and make conversations. You'll be able to dial into that meeting at eleven o'clock tomorrow. I was going to announce that at the end of the meeting, but, and we've been talking with the state superintendent about how we can ensure that every student would have every opportunity to meet the requirements, and even in some areas, we would need to relax or eliminate the requirement for this year for students to graduate. So that is fully underway, and I can't speak for the state superintendent, but I want to assure you that we, as a school system and the Maryland State Department of Education, are working across the state to figure this out and make sure that we err on the side of students, that we absolutely have to do that.
Great, thank you. And I appreciate the ongoing communication, because you can never communicate so much, and I think that people have a lot of questions, and it's to read through the emails, we get many of our answers that way. So thank you again to everyone. I know this has been a really hard thing to go through, but I really appreciate everyone's best thinking and hard work and everything. Thank you.
This is Modrowski.
Yes, hi, this is Rebecca. So a couple of clarification questions. Well, first of all, let me start off by saying thank you as well to everybody, to, you know, Jack and, you know, all the work that you and the staff are doing, to our teachers who are being there for our students, our food service people. And I also want to throw a special thank you out to our police department, particularly our SROs. I've spoken with several of them during visits to some of the food centers and hearing stories about how they're driving to homes and neighborhoods that they know have high needs and seeing if they need anything or if they can provide anything. It was very heartwarming to hear these stories and to know that, you know, they're going so far above and beyond what is even asked of them, so, as everyone is. But I just wanted to kind of reiterate the importance of, this is being an example of the importance of the relationships that our SROs build with our students, and that how it's so much more than some people often think. It's just about policing our children or whatever, but it's not, and this is a really great example of that. So I just wanted to give that a little shout out. I have a couple of clarifying questions then. I appreciate Ms. Silvestri's concerns. You know, I have a lot of concerns, I've mentioned it before, about the seniors and making sure that they have everything they need to graduate. So just to clarify, did you say that we will be able to dial into the state meeting tomorrow?
That's my understanding. So we'll gather that information and send it out to the board members this afternoon. I just got that on a call, that information right before this meeting started, so I've not explored that, but we'll send it out as it's available, okay?
Oh, yeah, that would be wonderful. I appreciate that. And also, you know, if you're having other, you know, meetings, virtual meetings or whatever, anything that board members can choose to call into if they want to, not that they would have to, would be really helpful in terms of knowing all the work that you guys are doing, going on behind the scenes. I had questions about the continuity of learning as well. I've heard from a lot of people that they would really like to see more video learning, so whether that's a virtual classroom or an all-day thing. Are we planning on doing anything like that?
Yes, we are. Thank you for your question, Ms. Modrowski. We are looking at multiple methods of learning for students to include videos. We're looking at videos that are done generally that connect to our current curriculum, particularly in math, and we're also looking at ways to have our teachers engage in video as well, so that we are putting all of these resources together as we just kind of navigate, that we're going to need to have all of them in place, all of the variety that you're speaking of.
Right. Okay. But it wouldn't be like a full, like, kids get up at, start at nine and are on the computer essentially with a break in the middle for lunch till three, doing classwork as a group?
So part of what our project leads are doing for the continuity of learning plan is they're actually having many discussions within each team, and they are divided by grade levels, to look at a variety of different schedules that will be appropriate for different grade levels, and to be able to have flexibility for people to choose schedules that work for them, so.
Okay, cool. Okay, that would be good, yeah. Like I said, I know that some of the private schools are doing those all-day things, and I know it's easier because they've got smaller groups, but I was just curious as to what that would look like, being able to occupy our students with learning through the majority of the better parts of the day, their sitting home.
Yeah.
So, you know, I know that's a big issue for a lot of parents. They're concerned about the time going by and the learning loss and all that kind of stuff, so I appreciate that we're working on that so diligently. Also, in terms of communication with the public during all of this, I know we're sending out, you know, kind of, here are some of the things that we're doing currently. Have we given any thought to doing any kind of like Facebook Live things with you all, where people could ask questions or call in questions or anything like that?
So one part of what we're going... One thing I will say is for each of the areas that I mentioned, it's going to be important for us to be able to interact and get feedback from, you know, various stakeholders about how all of this is working for them. We are looking at lots of different ways to do it. I mean, Facebook Live is one. We're looking at, I was just actually speaking with Mr. Tinby the other day about, there are a number of apps that our students use, and just thinking about what's going to be the one that really gets their attention that many of them are using. So for every audience, we're having this conversation with our community team about what will be the best venue, depending on who the audience is and what the information is that we need to share to put it out. And as we navigate through this, and if we're navigating through this longer than this two-week period, I am sure we'll be using all of that in different ways.
All of the tools.
All of it in different ways.
Yes, I would imagine. Right, okay. Well, I, it's just I've heard, you know, that there would be an interest in a little bit more of a connection kind of with the kids, and some of that might be addressed with like little video clips from you and Jack and whomever, you know, whatever the topic would happen to be, whoever might be our expert in the field, if you will, that some of the kids might really respond well to that kind of thing. So I just thought I'd throw that out there. And then my last thing is, could you just touch, you mentioned about the, the, the over fifty percent, the mandate for over fifty percent farm rates and things like that in terms of, but as, in terms of providing food stations, if you want to call them that. But as you all know, we've heard from other communities like Poolsville, for example, that's kind of further out there. Can you just explain so that people can really understand exactly what the issue is in terms of how, you know, how we have to determine where stations can go and what is involved in expanding to areas that are less than fifty percent farm rates?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Modrowski, for raising that, because I just gave a thirty thousand feet description of that, but we have Dr. Zuckerman on the line, who I'm actually going to ask to just share the specifics about the process for that. And again, I'm, thank you for raising that question. Dr. Zuckerman?
Sure, thank you.
Sure, thank you, Dr. McKnight, Ms. Modrowski. Great question. So when, we, and all school systems in Maryland, have enacted what really is our summer meals program. That's a model that school systems use when schools are closed in the summertime, as well as in the limited situations in the past where we may have had an extended closure due to inclement weather. It's a different operating structure that's governed under a set of regulations through the Maryland State Department of Education and the U.S. Department of Agriculture. In that model, the summer meals program model, enables school systems to provide food distribution in a very flexible manner, the way we're doing it, in schools and communities that are adjacent to schools that have a fifty percent farms rate and higher. And so we were able to immediately put our immediate summer meals program into place, because that's an infrastructure that we have. That was our first twenty locations that you saw last week, and we've been building up and expanding, but still under the auspices of the summer meals program. As we look to reach to communities that have poverty levels that are lower than fifty percent farms and significantly lower, in some cases that you described in Poolsville or other parts of the county, we're partnering, A, with our nonprofit communities such as Manna, who's a nonprofit dedicated to eliminating food insecurity, and we're using our school buses to support Manna in getting food to communities in that way. And at the same time, we are, right now, looking at ways to deploy our own food service and nutrition programs directly into communities with less than fifty percent farms rates through different delivery models than our summer meals program that are permissible under the Maryland State Department of Education and the United States Department of Agriculture regulations. So that is something that we're exploring today and will tomorrow, so we can stand up more programs. But I did just want to explain, you know, a little bit more of a granular level, what the regulatory framework is here that we've been operating under, and in fact, all school systems have been operating under, and so we're continuing to push farther and farther. And we also have to keep in mind just that, as well, just in terms of just our ability to ramp this up, as schools are closed, we have to build towards that as well. So we know the urgent need, as Dr. McKnight said, and we're going to continue to expand. But those are just some of the finer points that we've been working through.
Well, I appreciate that, because I know it's hard for people to understand how we pick where we're going, and as you said, some of the areas have a much lower than fifty percent number, but there are still people who need food. So anything that we can do, you know, please don't hesitate to ask us if there's, you know, if you need help with reaching out to the community or anything like that. I know, as people have mentioned, there's a lot of people who are interested in helping volunteer if need be. I love that we're using our buses to deliver food, and I know that the police department has said, or several of the police officers I spoke with have said that, you know, they're happy to help as well in any way. So, so thank you for that. And I think that that's really all that I have as far as this goes. Yeah.
Can I just give the phone number to the Montgomery County Volunteer Office of Community Partnerships, so that people who are listening have this number? That phone number is two four zero seven 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 eight three two zero. Two four zero seven 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 eight three two zero. And we really have been asking people to, who are interested in volunteering, to contact that number, because that's the office in the county that's really equipped to handle that volunteer effort. We love all the volunteers and the people who have been contacting us, but again, this is a very highly regulated process for food distribution for students, and so unfortunately, we have not been able to leverage volunteers in that regard, and we've been asking people to contact that office. And as Dr. Smith said earlier, we'll get more information up on our website about where people can donate, and the Education Foundation would be another good place that you mentioned. So I just want to share that phone number with everyone.
No, I really appreciate that. That's great, because if people want to go back and re-watch this clip or whatever, they can then have access to that information as well. So thank you for sharing that. I really do appreciate all the time you all are putting in. I've heard from administrators and teachers and stuff that there's still so much work going on behind the scenes, which is, you know, very impressive and very much appreciated. The more information we can give people, the more specific information we can give people, I think that the more comfortable they will be, because, and I know it's hard because we don't even know if this is going to be more than this week or more than this month, or, and then we've got spring break and whatever else, but I just, I know that it's really hard when we're all sitting here in our homes, not know exactly what's going on. So any, anything we can do to help, you know, update our parents, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Modrowski. Mr. Tinby?
Yep, so I have no immediate questions, but I too also wanted to say thank you to all of our staff members who've been working day and night over the past few weeks, just to make sure that everything is running smoothly. And also to thank the, I wanted to thank the students who've also been patient at home. Many of the students who have had questions and have been patient through this process, I'm going to thank them as well. Recently, before schools were closed, Dr. McKnight and I, we had a livestream where we got to answer students' questions. I thought that that was effective, and also a video by Dr. Gales and I was played in every class. And, uh, also a video by, um, Dr. Gales and I was played in every classroom. And so, I thought that, you know, I did want to say thank you to our, uh, staff who are pushing out a lot of the communications. I know students are really receiving the message. And I also wanted to exclaim the point that, um, the best way right now to help stop the spread of the virus is to stay home. Uh, and I hope that students who are tuning in right now can- can follow by that. Uh, but again, I just, I did just want to say thank you to everybody who's been working day and night on this. I know this is, uh, a really tough time, so thank you.
Sure, and I'll just, um, add my thanks as well, not only to Dr. Smith and Dr. McKnight and all senior leadership. We've mentioned food services and, um, SROs, but also our building service workers who have been busy cleaning all of our school buildings, um, for staff that have been cleaning our buses, and just for our administrators too. I've been seeing everyone on Twitter, holding their virtual meetings with, um, their leadership teams. And so, the work is continuing on for- for all of our employees that do, um, well, I should say is that they're thinking about the work although they're not in the school buildings in front of, um, in front of, uh, students. That everyone is, um, hard at work thinking about what the next steps will be for our students. So, just wanted to echo the comments of my colleagues and say thank you to everyone who's hard at work in this system. I'm very proud to not only be a board member, but to be a parent of two MCPS students who are getting their work done, um, their mother is on them, um, to let them know that this is not vacation. Um, and so, we're getting messages from principals every day, so I do appreciate all the, um, the work that everybody is putting into this, um, I don't want to say new normal, but this- this- this situation that we're in right now. So, with that being said, thank you to my colleagues. We will go on to item number three on our agenda, which is consent items. I wanted to ask board members if they had any items that they wanted to pull or do we wanna, or could we move them all in block?
Well, if we have a question, how do we do that?
So, we can do, um, if- if it was a, if there was a question about a particular item, just, you could just pull the item if you have a question that you want to ask about the item. Then we can move the rest in block.
Um, I didn't, to Dr. Daca, do you want to pull or do you want me to? Um, I- I like to talk about the technology, um, contracts, there's two of them.
Okay, is that under three point two?
Uh-huh.
Which item?
I don't know, so we'll pull the number.
Okay, so then, so then, why don't we do this? We can, um, move them all, we can move it all in block, and then you can ask your question.
Uh, this is Pat, I'll move them all in block. I'll move all the consent items in block.
Okay, can I get a second? Please state your name.
This is Brenda, I second.
Okay, then move the second in. So, Ms. Mondroski, what's your? Or Ms. Dr. Daca?
Well, I was just trying, like, we can't- Yeah, Dr. Daca, do you want to start?
Well, I have a question as well. This is, uh, Janet Dixon, um, uh, about, uh, three point one six. Are- are we talking about the twenty-five thousand dollars or, you know, moving those in block? And then, or are we talking about everything from three point one to three point one six?
Well, no one gave me a number to pull out, so we pulled them all in block.
Well, I said three point, okay.
So, so I moved all of them- This is Pat, so I moved all of them in block. But I assume that everybody who has a question about any discrete item, uh, you know, should ask that question.
Right. Right, well, I'd like to pull three, three, three point one six. Recommended fiscal year 2020 supplemental appropriation for striving readers comprehensive literacy grant.
Okay, um, this is Judy, uh, and I know that Rebecca and I were talking about three point three. So, could that be?
Right, and three point four.
So, um, three point three, and Miss Dixon, you had three point?
One six.
One six, okay.
And then I would, would second moving the rest of them in block.
And- and three point four.
Well, yeah, you pulled the one that's two point-
Right. So, three point four, three point three, and three point one six. So, I got a motion to second to move all the rest in block. Ms. Mondroski, is that a yes for you?
Yes.
Miss Dixon?
Yes.
Miss Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Tinby?
Yes?
Dr. Daca? Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Bestra?
Yes.
Dr. Daca, we couldn't hear you. Is that a yes for you? Maybe you're on mute. That's a, that's a yes for me. And so, is it moving the second in? And, Dr. Daca? So, I'm making the assumption that when I heard her, that she, well-
Well, I think you have the vote.
Yeah, I do, I have the vote, yeah. So, um, can we get someone to address, um, three point four?
Sure. This is Angie, Angie. Oh, I'm sorry, this is Angie Zuckerman. Did you want me to, well, I'm sorry, there's no question. I- I apologize, Ms. Mondroski, go ahead.
No, no, that's okay. Um, I just, I'd like you to speak to it. It's just, um, I know it's an extension, so generally, I'm not, um, as especially concerned with extensions because it's something that we've obviously already been doing. Um, but between this and three point three, um, you know, the ones for fourteen point five million, the others eighteen million, um, that's a lot of money. And I'm just curious if you could speak to, um, a little more specifically what these do and- and why they are necessary.
Sure, thank you. So, these are essentially annual contracts, as you noted, with extensions that help, uh, um, purchase all of the computer equipment and software associated with our technology modernization program. Um, and so, that's why they're so large. So, we're talking about all of our, um, desktops, all of our mobile devices that are gonna be replaced. Um, schools go through a refresh program where computers are upgraded. Um, so, this is, uh, this covers all of that work. Um, I believe the total for technology modernization in the capital improvements program was, um, twenty-five million. Um, so this is not all the way there, but this is a good chunk of it that enables us to buy more Chromebooks, more, uh, iPads, more everything that supports the technology infrastructure of the district.
That's- that's for three point four, correct?
It's for both of them.
Okay, 'cause, okay, 'cause one was an extension and the other one looks like it's a new contract.
Right, so, I have to look here to see which one the extension is. But both of them are- are designed to support everything I just said.
So, so this is Jeannie Dawson, um, Director of Materials Management. On- on, Ms. Mondroski, on the, um, Technology Solutions Contract, um, this is a new annual contract. And- and the purchases is for technology solutions for us, and it is what Dr. Zuckerman was talking about in terms of hardware, software, accessories, uh, cloud, and professional services are included in that document.
Right.
For, um, the extension. And for, well, that was for the new technology. So, the extension piece, this is an annual extension bridging a contract with University of Maryland for purchasing computers, again, which Dr. Zuckerman had referenced, and associated hardware and services for all of MCPS.
Okay, so, so basically, we already have a contract of fourteen point five, we're extending that, and then we're adding another eighteen of the twenty-five that was in the budget, in the capital budget for technology in this, for this new contract, is that correct?
So, this- this is, this is gonna be spending authority, um, and so it's gonna be dependent on what the final budget is. Obviously, we can't exceed what the final budget is, but this is, this is ultimately spending authority that we have, um, in these different contractual mechanisms. These are umbrella contracts that enable us to purchase all of this equipment, and we can only spend as much as is budgeted. But this gives us the authority to leverage both of these mechanisms to purchase the technology.
Okay, and these are techno- this is technology that'll eventually, will either go in the classroom or into the offices, essentially?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, I don't know if Dr. Daca had any further questions. I was just curious, like, what the new technology was gonna be used for. But you're saying it's just basically more computers and things like that? It's not, it doesn't have anything to do with, like, our- our central office system?
No, this is separate, this is separate from-
I thought maybe, I thought maybe it was something new that we were looking for.
No, this is, this is separate from that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
So, that takes care of three point four and three point three. Um, now we have three point one six, Miss Dixon?
Right, thank you. Um, I was really happy to see that MCPS is getting a grant from, uh, the Maryland State, uh, in the amount of, uh, I had some questions about, uh, how we would use, uh, that we're given. And the thing, uh, you know, if, uh, staff are prepared to, uh, share funds or- uh, it would be fine to give here.
Miss Dixon, you're going in and out.
Uh, yeah, you know what happens? You know, the life or whatever, so I think I- Can you hear me?
Yeah.
A little.
Miss Dixon, you're going in and out.
Okay, um, well, I don't-
That's better, that's better, that's better.
That's better, okay. So, I- I do have three questions, and it'll be fine if staff want to give those just to me in writing. Um, so, I wanted to know, uh, for school, for the target audience, um, the question was, why is more than half of the, why is more than half of the money- sorry, why is more than half of the money, five hundred thousand, eight hundred and five dollars, being used for salaries? How many employees is that and what are their positions? They have the ability to teach students to read. And then, uh, the third question is, uh, what is going for the administrative costs, other instruction? Things that were listed in the little chart there and the amounts next to each. And as I said, uh, you know, having that in writing or staff wanting to address that now, uh, you know, your choice.
Miss Dixon, good afternoon, this is Maria Navarro. Um, I will begin to address this and then send you and the board members the details in writing as well. Um, as you mentioned, this is a state grant. We are in our third year, um, uh, or year three of receiving the grant. Um, the focus of this grant is for literacy support, is pre-K or actually birth to, um, twelfth grade. The grant was approved to focus on at the, um, from birth to age five. Um, early childhood work is around parent education materials. Uh, we're working through the Judy Centers, and we're putting together take-home kids for, um, for parents to support, uh, literacy development at home. And we're also working with a partnership, uh, with the public libraries for the, uh, Thousand Books Before Kindergarten Initiative. So, part of the grant is going, um, to purchase the instructional materials and support that area for grades kindergarten into middle school. The, um, instructional salaries are all teacher professional development to support the curriculum rollout in Benchmark and Study Sync, our elementary and middle school, uh, curriculum. And then for high, and then some additional interventions that we have for the secondary students in System Forty-four and Eye Lift. Um, and, um, and then finally, I think the other question was, uh, what are the other instructional costs? And I can break that down to you, but they're tied to those big buckets of work. The majority of that grant is being spent on the professional development for the, for the teacher rollout for the literacy curriculum in our district.
Okay, well, thank you, Maria Navarro. Um, I appreciate that and, uh, you know, so I think that we can move forward with that. I would just like to share one, uh, other item with, uh, parents. Um, I actually, uh, got an email, uh, I guess it's from audible.com. Uh, I think they work in conjunction with Amazon. And, um, parents can go on to audible.com if they can download that app. But they are also, uh, making available for free all of their books, um, for young people going across the board. Do the box, right? All you have to do is click the option you're interested in and select a book. And, you know, somebody is reading that book. And, uh, I just think that it was a very nice thing for them to do. So, it's a resource for parents, and I just wanted to share that, uh, with them, uh, you know, to have, uh, their students reading, uh, during this time. Thank you very much.
Miss Dixon, that's very good information. We will use that information.
Hi, this is Judy Daca. About the striving readers comprehensive literacy grant, have we had an evaluation on that? Because I'm always concerned that we have so many different reading programs. Which ones are successful? You don't have to tell me that right now, but I- I do want to know about that.
Yes, Dr. Daca, so, um, what we're doing right now with those fundings is supporting the professional development for the, um, the curriculum materials that the board approved last year for literacy in both the core and the intervention. And all of the interventions are being monitored and the data entered into our student system so that we can look at impact. And if you recall from the presentation earlier, for the Kerwin funding, we showed some examples of how we're monitoring the student data so we can take a look at the impact of the funding, um, and, um, and how that funding supports the- the purchases that we did for literacy.
So, hearing no further questions?
It's a base year, let me see what's the base year.
I'm sorry?
Say that again? Say that again?
Oh.
Dr. Daca, do you have any more comments, questions?
I'm sorry, I'm just saying, is it, is, was it a base year last year or is this the base year? Because, you know, how are we going to evaluate it unless we can see how- how it's working?
Yes, Dr. Daca, so this is the first year of the implementation of the interventions in the core curriculum, so this would be our base year.
Are there any more questions, board members?
Thank you.
I don't have any more. Oh, this is Rebecca. I don't have another question. I just wanted to mention that, um, in terms of the technology ones. Um, at one of the work sessions or, uh, public hearings, I think it was, it asked about a technology inventory. I know we've got other things that are prioritized right now, but, um, I just wanted to kind of re-bring up that because with this coming in, it will be helpful for me to know what, uh, what technology we have in which schools and which classrooms, that kind of thing.
Yeah, we will, we're actually in the middle of that right now as we look at how to get equipment and connectivity to all of our students, if indeed this is a long-term circumstance we're in. And so, we will, uh, we'll continue to do that work and get that to the board as soon as we have an accurate, uh, assessment of what we have. to the board as soon as we have an accurate, uh, assessment of what we have.
That makes sense, great, thank you so much.
Can I get a motion to move the rest in block?
Motion to the rest in block.
This is Pat. I moved the rest in block.
Okay, can I get a second? So, Pat, did, I, I, I heard two people make a motion. Who, who will, will take, um-
Well, I just need the motion first. Leave me there, it's a second.
Yes.
Okay, so is it moving the second it, all in favor, Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Ms. Mondrosky?
Yes.
Mr. Tinby?
Yes.
Ms. Silve- Ms. Silvestri?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Wolf?
Yes.
Dr. Daca?
Yes.
Okay, and yes from Mrs. Evans, and that is unanimous. And we have come to the last item, which is adjournment. If I can get a board member to make a motion to adjourn?
Hi, this is Brenda. I moved to adjourn.
And can I get someone to second?
Judy Daca, second.
Okay.
Judy Daca, second.
Okay, so is it moving the second it? All in favor? Dr. Daca?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Tinby?
Yes.
Ms. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Silvestri?
Yes.
Mrs. Mondrosky?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
And that is a yes from Mrs. Evans, and we are adjourned.